Do it. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, September 28th, 2021, and it's 6:30 in the evening and it is not raining outside. We, you know, it was nice for a little rain, but it got a little bit much last night. But my grass is now green and it's growing, which means I'm gonna have to mow it. Yes, yes, I had a break there. So let the record show, the council is all here and happy and it's a wonderful day. And council members, we have the September 14th minutes in your packet and do they meet with your approval?
I did have one addition.
Yeah?
Page four.
Page four?
Four point one, the last paragraph of four point one, where it starts out with Counselor Morton asked.
Okay, yeah.
At that point, we did say that it is in the goal setting, so I just wanted to add that in there, that it is in the goal setting already.
Okay, so.
Yeah, because Counselor Morton said that the goal-setting session would be the best place to talk about that.
Okay, does that seem okay with everybody? Everybody's shaking, is there shaking their heads okay?
Mm-hmm.
Any problem? Karen, you got that?
So where has it been?
Right above four point two in that paragraph that says Counselor Morton, that final one.
Yeah, I've seen that, so what, has the wording changed or adjusted?
Counselor Jobb?
This, this issue was previously addressed and is in the goal setting.
Okay, previously.
Previously addressed, is, is in the current goals, current city council goals.
And then Zier said that?
It was said.
I brought it up and I think everybody agreed that, you know, yes, that is something we agreed to in goal-setting.
Is everybody okay? If someone would, and Karen, you now have it?
I think so.
Okay, thank you. If someone would move amended minutes?
I'm moved to approve what the corrections has stated.
A motion?
Second that.
Second to Counselor Jobb, all in favor, second five of saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, opposed to Carrie's, thank you very much. Is there comments? I don't see anybody jumping up, so we'll continue moving forward. Under my mayor report, I just want to let you know that I've been kind of busy a couple of weeks here and we had our COG board meeting, which I represent small cities of Polk County and we had a homeless presentation, which was very interesting and as soon as that is up on the YouTube, we'll make sure that people have an opportunity to watch that. And when you have things on YouTube, I do remind you that you can set the speed, so you don't have to be in just one time, it can go 1.5 or two times fast. So you can, you can keep track, but it does move a little bit more quickly. Had the opportunity to, as part of Hispanic Heritage Month, Mayor Kuns over in Monmouth and I did a reading, we were invited to read a story last Saturday. There was ribbon cutting last week for the new hearts and compass business downtown coming up. Have meetings with the new staff people for Senator Merkley and also along with staff, met with some of the DC staff for Senator Merkley as they're moving forward on a number of projects. Coming up this next week, Polk County Commissioner Gordon is going to be over here with Mr. Pesimire and myself. And then next, on Saturday, I'll be helping out with the hop run and also with the ghost walk and then we'll also be next week meeting with the new PP&amp;L folks for this area. So lots of things percolating. Counselor liaison reports, Counselor Roden, do you have anything, did you have a Wimpeg meeting?
We did not, it was postponed because they wanted to wait until they were more on campus and settled.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Counselor Morton, you have two areas that you can comment on?
I do. For the library board report, the library will be handing out color-it-yourself trick-or-treat bags for the kids on the 29th and 30th of October, which is Friday and Saturday, and a little bit of candy will go in each bag. IDA is coordinating trick-or-treat with downtown on Sunday, 10:31. So there's an opportunity for kids to get goodies three times. A grant, the library has submitted a grant to OCF for a learning hub. There has been no word yet on the other grant already submitted for library expansion and the library director also said that there are funds managed by the community foundation that can be accessed for this project. Summer reading is done, there were 24 virtual programs added to the slate of regular programs. Great participation by kids, teens and adults, more than in 2020, but not up to level of previous years yet. For the museum, the museum board needs more volunteers. The current volunteers are longtime board members and very dedicated, but it's also a very small group. There are two groups that handle museum affairs, the board and the Heritage Museum Society. They have different memberships and different purposes in that the board has input on projects and exhibits, while the society is in charge of fundraising excluding grants. Everyone on the board is pleased with the new museum manager Natasha Adams and she will be very easy to work with, they say. The museum is participating from its new location in Saturday's ghost walk.
Thank you, appreciate that. Mr. Pesimire, I think it's time for the city manager report. I almost feel like, you know, there should be mus, life is so much better if there's musical accompaniment.
It would definitely be better since I am such a dynamic speaker of not.
Give yourself some credit.
So just a few things tonight and as you notice on the agenda, there's a number of presentations. We're trying to do more of that just to, to make sure that we're getting information to you in advance and also, you know, just to make sure that while we're not calling those work sessions, you know, some of these are really meant to be interactive, so make sure you ask questions and participate. We have plenty of time tonight to do that. But just a couple of things from my report, just wanted to let you know that from time to time, we do a photo shoot and we're going to be doing one here in early October. It's going to be getting some pictures of downtown, retail, nighttime sunsets, patios and just all the new stuff that's been down there. It's been a while since we've actually gone through and taken a really, you know, good set of pictures down there and there's a lot to show off, so we want to do that. And if you looked on Facebook today, you probably saw Courtney posted something about wanting some models to actually be in these pictures. So if somebody is interested or they have beautiful young children that they want to have be in the, in the pictures, feel more than welcome, we're glad to coordinate that and to, to do that. We talked a little bit about the job fair last council meeting and it's kind of coming together, so October 11th from 3:00 to 7:00. I have a feeling this won't be the first, well, it might be the first in a long time, but it won't be the last one. So far, we have 12 businesses participating, two of those from, from Monmouth. We've been reaching out to Monmouth and working with them and I'm sure there'll be more from there. We're hoping to get 15 to 20 businesses. If it gets more than that, then, you know, we'll probably do what we can to accommodate it or, you know, have another fair at a different time, just to make sure that we're, we're getting that out there. We did get some really good news that we received the Transportation Growth Management Grant that we applied for. Kudos to Sean Irvine and Freda Vander. Freda Vander, you know, did a lot of work to kind of think about that, work with ODOT, make sure that it met the criteria and get it to them in a timely manner. This TGM grant is actually kind of a follow-on to what the Transportation System Plan has done and one of the things that we have identified through that planning process is around Central Plaza, the Talmud Street area, there's a lot of different uses in that area that we think can come to better, come together better. They can actually integrate with each other more fluidly. You have a lot of commercial there, you have food there, you've got vehicle challenges, you know, since this is an ODOT Transportation Growth Management Grant, you know, there has to be a transportation component and a land use component. So we want to really dive down deeper in what we found through both the 2040 Vision Plan, talking about housing needs and talking about commercial development, talking about that area in particular. There was a lot of comments on how, you know, we've got a great downtown area, but we also have another area that we haven't done as much thoughtful planning and things on in that area. And then just trying to bring all the transportation compose, you know, that could potentially go through there and we talked about looking at E Street as being a kind of a separate corridor for, you know, bike and head and other things, trying to get them off of Monmouth Street where we have lots of traffic conflicts and other things. So just was pretty obvious to us as we take a look at some of the other projects that we've done that this would be a great area to study and fortunately, ODOT agreed. And so I think we asked for right around $100,000. I think we have a 12% matching grant monies on that, which actually can also be come from just staff support, so with the time that we put into it, we can, we can use. So it's not just all cash, but it'll be great to take a close look at that area and to figure out how that area can develop and just become more integrated.
Tom, you mentioned housing.
Yes.
How does that fit into that?
Well, I think there's a few things. You know, as we kind of take a look at the area and especially when you're talking about transportation and other things, one of the things that we heard in the 2040 Vision Plan is B for senior housing and that is one that kind of just jumped out to me is, you know, it's close to food, it's close to retail, it's close to a lot of, you know, things that could potentially be used. There's obviously some healthcare in that area as well and so I'm sure that'll be one of the things that's kind of talked about is how can we integrate more, you know, healthcare providers in this area? And then, you know, just, you know, assisted living type facilities or, or other affordable housing type options. So, you know, I think when we got the 2040 Vision Plan, there were a number of things that were identified and I think that kind of can.
Thank you.
And we'll also, you know, get some information, actually we'll get some good information out of the housing needs analysis. I think we told you that we got that grant at the last meeting. So, so those probably will actually end up coming together to inform each other as we move forward. And then finally, I did send out a email to all of you asking for ideas about resident support for the American Rescue Plan Act monies. No huge rush on that, I would like to get stuff back here in the next couple of weeks to kind of just see what you're hearing as you go out and talk to your constituents and figure out where things could go forward. I received this from Counselor Corr about a year, year and a half ago, quite a while ago, but it's called the Independent Support Network and it has actually a lot of the pieces inside of it, you know, talking about who all the key players are and how people work together. So she's got a head start on you, but I'm sure that you guys will come up with some great ideas. We have some ideas as well at staff level, but, but I really want to hear from you guys.
Can you explain again what the criteria is we're looking at for our constituents that we're talking?
Yeah, I mean, so the American Rescue Plan Act allows for a lot of different things. And I think from my perspective, you know, if it was impacted by COVID and there's a need in the community, then just let us know, whether it falls into the resident support category or business support category or an infrastructure category, don't worry about that too much. We'll, we'll kind of sort through it and kind of figure it out. But I think those would be the only two criteria that I would be talking to people about is, you know, were you impacted by COVID and how can we, or how can someone come in and help you actually recover from that? And so I would be, I'd go much broader than, than narrow on this and then we'll sort through the details.
But it's not for businesses?
Well, certainly you can give us ideas on business as well, but we're already, you know, working on some programs there as we talked about at last council meeting. But if you have other specific business items, please let us know. There, I'm not, I'm not putting any restrictions on what you can send us. We'll just probably put it in different buckets as we.
So just one more thing, so we can, we can advocate for local nonprofits, then that would be appropriate?
Anything's appropriate if they're impacted by COVID and, and honestly nonprofits are certainly something that the American Rescue Plan Act has said can receive monies through this. And like I said, you know, especially if it's residence, we're probably going to be partnering with an organization anyway and it very well may be a nonprofit. So, you know, absolutely, you know, whatever thoughts people have, I think that's great.
I have one more, I'm sorry, one more question, then I'll stop for this. Is there a way to use this money to hire someone for like a recreational position? I know we used to have in our community Dawn Barry who organized Mickey and, you know, served both communities in advocating for, you know, activities for youth in our communities. Is there a way to put some of that money towards hiring a person for that position?
Yeah, well, again, all ideas are welcome. I don't know, I can't answer that right now. I, I would say that the one thing that they were pretty clear with us on ARPA monies is make sure that you don't create a program or something that you can't fund after the money goes away. But, you know, a lot of times what you do is you, you get it started and then you find a funding source to make that happen. So I wouldn't limit yourself on anything if that's an idea, throw it in the bucket and we'll, we'll consider along with everything else, so.
I just want to make sure that the money we set aside for resident support doesn't get used for businesses and I'm sure you're going to keep an eye on that. But I was in a meeting last night with Commissioner Gordon, I wonder if Batman fans have. That just dawned on me. He mentioned ARPA money can be used for resource delivery. Can you kind of explain that, what that means essentially, if you know?
So I, wow, I don't know that I can because I don't know what he meant by resource delivery.
Seems wide open to me.
So, yeah, so I guess resource delivery, you know, like a food bank or, you know, utility assistance program or something that, you know, for people who were affected by COVID. Yeah, the one thing that's, that's good about the ARPA monies is they did give us more flexibility than they did under the carriers. Under the carriers, our hands were pretty tied. So I think that's one of the reasons I want to get ideas and thoughts so then we can go through and vet them and see, okay, well, how could we make this qualify? Which one of those five items under ARPA which has, you know, 500 different criteria under it? Would it fit to? But if we don't do it now and we don't start getting ahead of it, then we'll miss the opportunities as they come along, so.
And we'll have a chance to visit with Commissioner Gordon coming up in the not distant future.
So with that, any questions for me or staff? All right, well, I'm going to, to do what we kind of talked about before. You've got a lengthy presentation from Sean Irvine on economic development. I'm guessing you're going to get a shorter presentation, but one of the things that we've wanted to do at council goal-setting meeting or some other opportunities is to make sure that you had a chance to talk to our senior staff and, and talk about the programs that they're doing and make sure that you understand all the work that they're doing and then have the opportunity to ask them questions about what's going on. So tonight, Jason Kissler, our IT manager is going to start off by kind of just talking about what his department does and for all of those who don't know, his department includes himself and he does an incredible amount of work. So it might actually be a long presentation because he really does a ton of stuff around here and it's very much appreciated. So with that, I'm going to turn over Jason and then we'll go from there, so.
All right, Mayor, Council, having me, I don't often get to step out from behind the curtain, so it's busy all. So, yeah, I'll be giving the IT department overview for it. Here's a brief agenda that we'll be going over. I am going to try and keep this shorter than the previous presentation. My hope there is that we're going to take kind of a 10,000-foot view of the things that IT does and if there's any areas that you guys key in on and want to go into a little bit more depth and I've left some room at the end for that. So a lot of people want to know, what is it or what is IT? So the definition of information technology is defined as the use of any computers, storage, networking and other physical devices, infrastructure and processes to create, process, store, secure and exchange all forms of electronic data. So that's a pretty broad description. Many people think of information technology's primary focus as fixing computers or getting the stubborn printer to work correctly. This area of work known as help desk is only a portion of the IT department's overall responsibility. The Independence IT Department is deeply involved in every core service that the city provides. The IT department's mission statement is, quote, "To provide all TIT services in support of all city departments while seeking ways to use existing and new technology to increase staff efficiencies and transparency." Here are some examples of IT systems that other departments depend upon for the regular operations. Finance. Finance relies on a central finance system that integrates with various other department systems in order to generate bills, collect payments electronically and track and report on all financial information. The police department relies on many systems to ensure accurate data and protection of the officers and residents of Independence. This includes a, quote, "rolling office" in their patrol cars that includes access to federal and state criminal justice databases, a full video system with three or more cameras, secure communications, navigation, electronic citations and the ability to collect digital evidence in the field. Our court relies on specialty software and systems that automatically receive e-citations from police officers and others. Automating citation gathering and entry into the court software reduces time and eliminates another potential point of human error. Our public works department relies on digital water meters that allow readings to be done automatically while driving. This saves an immense amount of staff time. Traditionally, all meter readings were done by hand. Water and sewer, another department of public works, is dependent upon controls and sensors in a supervisory control and data acquisition system, also known as SCADA. This system automatically manages valves, pumps, tanks and more 24/7. If these systems detect a problem, it will autonomously contact public works employees. Economic development and tourism. Last year, we greatly expanded public Wi-Fi coverage. On average, we see over 200 people use the public Wi-Fi every day. The Wi-Fi infrastructure at the civic center allowed us to launch a large drone and capture the first 360-degree video recording of a total eclipse. The Wi-Fi infrastructure at Rude View Park allowed us to collaborate with an Italian company to deploy crowd management sensors and software. This project won us a 2018 Government Technology Innovation Award. The building department. Our building department also utilizes a, quote, "rolling office" in their truck. This improves the efficiency of our building inspectors. They are able to do their inspections and issue permits in the field. This saves a lot of time by eliminating trips back to the office. The data they work with in the field is automatically uploaded to our finance software as well. So there's basically three core functions to IT and they're in front of you right now. There's functionality, governments and, governance and infrastructure. So functionality is basically what everyone sees and recognizes IT as. That's creating and maintaining operational applications, developing and storing electronic data that belongs to the organization and assisting in the use of software and data management of all functional areas of the organization. Governance is authorizing the principles about how staff can utilize the organization's technology. The primary focus of this core function is security and compliance. Lastly, we have infrastructure. All, infrastructure is all of the physical components essential for an IT system. This includes hardware, network and circuitry of equipment according to the needs and size of the organization. Now we're going to go through those three things individually. So the core function of IT is the meat and potatoes. The most forward-facing and what most people think of when they hear IT. The functional aspect of IT configures and supports all end-user devices, including but not limited to telephones, cell phones, desktop computers, printers, scanners and lots more. In addition to hardware and devices, all software used by the city, for city purposes, is configured and supported by the IT department. Also part of functionality is making sure that your users are trained and know how to use the software and assets that you have. IT is heavily involved in onboarding. We hire a variety of people who, with a variety of skill levels when it comes to technology. The IT department is heavily involved in the onboarding process of new employees and assists in getting them up to speed on how we use our various assets. So then we have deploying new software and hardware. Investing in a new software package can be expensive and challenging. For the end user, this could mean learning a new way of doing their work. The transition from one software solution to another can cause stress and reduce productivity. The IT department works hard to ease these processes as much as possible by holding one-on-one or classroom-based trainings and refreshers. Also, the IT department works as basically a general technical expert. So essentially, when we're exploring new ideas and finding ways to improve processes on a technology level is when I'll usually get brought into a project. The IT department also invest, or assists with investigations. As technology becomes increasingly involved in everyday life, it also means that it is increasingly involved in crimes. The IT department provides technical training and assistance to patrol staff, detectives and command staff on a variety of matters. The most common areas of assistance are with electronic evidence and warrants. The most com, common, I'm sorry. Electronic evidence presents special challenges on how to securely capture and review it. We process hundreds of different phones, apps, videos, video surveillance systems and other items. Warrants for electronic evidence can also be challenging. Warrants must be specific and not too broad. The IT department helps train detectives on wording and key terms to ensure that the warrant will be approved by the courts and the information that we need is covered. Next, we have governance. Sorry, I love that picture on the side. So there's basically three parts to governance. There's policy, compliance and security and it's basically driven from the ground up. The need for security drives compliance and compliance drives policy. So the IT department is also responsible for developing various policies on the acceptable use and security practices that all users must agree to in order to use the city's technology assets. Many of our technology policies are driven by required compliances. Failing to meet required compliances can have a detrimental impact on the city's ability to provide core services. For example, our police department relies on access to various state and federal databases that are required for them to do their job, such as criminal history, fingerprinting and identification services, firearms, et cetera. Access to these databases is governed by the Criminal Justice Information Security Policy, otherwise known as SEJIS. This compliance is enforced by the FBI, then Oregon State Police, then down to our local agency security officer and our terminal access coordinator, who is Diane, Diane Reisen. Failure to meet the standards set in place by the SEJIS policy will result in our agency's access being revoked. Many of our compliance requirements are driven by security needs. Security, as I'm sure you're all well aware, is a very important topic. Increasingly, local governments are becoming targets of threat actors. The motivations of these groups are diverse. Primary motives include extortion, activism, insider threats and crimes of opportunity. Some of these threats could bring substantial liability upon the city and potentially freeze operations for days or weeks. The IT department takes a defense-in-depth approach to security, placing multiple security controls throughout our IT environment. Our perimeter systems see well over half a million scans and break-in attempts every single day. Most of these are crimes of opportunity. It's similar to walking down the street and checking dark car doors for the one left unlocked. Unfortunately, this makes finding targeted, more targeted attacks difficult. There is a ton of data to analyze and it's coming in 24/7. So this is the stuff kind of behind the curtain. Hardware. Hardware is the physical part of IT infrastructure and comprises all of the elements necessary to support the basic functioning of the machines and devices constituting the infrastructure itself. Software refers to all the applications used by the city for internal purposes and to provide services to customers. Software includes server applications, productivity applications, operating systems and much more. The network is essential to establish internal and external communications of all elements and devices. The network includes all hardware and, uh, whoops. The network includes all hardware and software elements necessary to ensure network enablement, internet connectivity and security. It ensures that personnel get access to stored and transferred data only from strictly controlled access points to reduce the risk of data theft or damage. And the last part of infrastructure is actually humans. Human users such as network administrators, developers, designers and end-users with access to any IT appliance or service are also part of the IT infrastructure, specifically with the advent of user-centric IT service deployment. I can touch on that a little bit. In the past, IT was very focused on the machines themselves and that's what mattered, the network, the computer. With technology really integrating into everyday life, that has changed and IT is very much a customer-centered. very much a customer-centric type of use. So it's more about enabling the user and solving the user's challenges rather than being so concerned about the equipment. Anybody recognize what movie the picture's from?
Rocky.
Close.
Over the top.
Yeah. So I figured this was a fitting picture for the administrative side of IT. This is where I get to arm wrestle Tom and Gloria and all the other departments. Budget. The management and administrative side of information technology can take significant amounts of time. Being a smaller city, the budget process is a particularly difficult time for all departments. Typically, businesses across all sectors spend between 3.5% to 7% of their overall budget on IT. Through our strategic partnerships and use of cloud computing, we are able to run on a lean 2% of our overall budget dedicated to IT. Vendor management and contract negotiations can also be a difficult hurdle for a small IT department to tackle. Software as a Service and other cloud offerings have enabled more and more businesses to obtain access to highly specialized systems and expertise. Unfortunately, many of the minimum purchase requirements are beyond what we can afford. Most contract negotiations take extremely creative approaches. Also, being a small organization means wearing a lot of different hats outside of your scope of your assigned department. There are many times that we need all hands on deck. Here are a few things that the IT department has assisted with during the last year. We've assisted and acted as a backup to building maintenance for HVAC issues. We did a complete redesign and upgrade of audio and video systems in the event center. During the pandemic, we utilized the text messaging on our main phone line quite a bit. I acted as a frontline customer service rep to respond to and direct residents' questions and concerns to the proper location. Graphic design assistance was provided to tourism and events for various events, including the drive-in movie series. There's a fair amount of video production and editing for special events, like the Hiroshima Peace Tree dedication at Inspiration Gardens. Community outreach and social media. I've acted as a resource to help get urgent information out to the community. In addition to that, just living here in Independence, I always had my Independence hat on, so I always got my ear to the ground hearing what pain points people are having and bringing that back. Economic development. I've had tons and tons of brainstorming sessions with Sean on what's next in the tech industry. It usually starts out as walking by his office and stopping by the door and saying, hey, what do you know about this? And the last big thing that we've kind of stepped out of our traditional role, especially during the pandemic, I don't know if you guys, do you remember a little piece of software called Zoom? So during the shutdown of the pandemic, we, the IT department actually ran every single and livestreamed every single public meeting during the pandemic. So it's a lot of big responsibilities with little resources. How do we do that? One of the main things is partnerships. The City of Independence works with many other state and federal agencies for assistance. Some of the services that the IT department provides rely on huge amounts of infrastructure and extremely specialized talents that are required 24/7. Some of these partnerships include threat intelligence from Homeland Security and the FBI, security breach response and forensics from the multi-state sharing and analysis center, as well as penetration testing from the Center for Internet Security that tests our system's defenses monthly. The next big one is peers. No one can be an expert at everything, so it is very valuable to network with peers that are smarter than you in other areas. The sharing of information and ideas on how to solve complex IT problems is absolutely vital to the industry. We all support each other and stand on each other's shoulders to achieve success that otherwise we could not do on our own. Throughout my time working with Independence and other local agencies, I found that the government IT industry was really lacking an effective method of collaborating. In response to this, I co-founded the Oregon First Responders Technology Advisory Group. Since its founding, the following agencies' IT departments have joined and contributed: City of Monmouth, City of Dallas, Polk County Fire District Number One, Polk County, City of Kaiser, City of Salem, City of Woodburn, Clackamas County, Marion County, Calamuth County, City of Sandy, City of Oregon City, and the City of Gresham. Another great resource that makes this possible is other employees. Independence has a reputation for having employees who go above and beyond. On many occasions, other employees have stepped outside of their regular roles at the city to assist where they can. Some things aren't possible to do with one person, and to those employees who have helped me, thank you. The next thing that we use is cloud computing quite a bit. We take a hybrid cloud approach, which is using a mixture of cloud infrastructure and your own infrastructure to solve a problem. This type of approach allows Independence to operate at the same level of sophistication and security as agencies with much larger budgets. Economics of scale afford us this opportunity. Finally, AI or artificial intelligence. Previously, I mentioned that hundreds of thousands of security events need to be reviewed and triaged. We utilize artificial intelligence to monitor all of our network traffic and workstation actions in real time. When a security event occurs, the system automatically triages the event. If the system asserts that the event is a legitimate attack, it will autonomously isolate the section of the network and devices that are part of the attack. You can think of this as our IT immune system. The network segments and devices will remain isolated until the IT department can review what has happened and remediate the situation. The connected world continues to be more complex and happening faster than humans can react. Oh, there's been a lot of talk about cloud. So I'm sure you've all heard the term cloud, but what is it? Essentially boiled down, the cloud is someone else's infrastructure. All right, so now you can say that you've seen what the cloud looks like.
I'm not sure that gave me any good warm feelings. I think that scared me more than anything.
All right, so professional development. Staying current on emerging technologies and methodologies is a constant pursuit in IT. Technology changes rapidly, and a robust training program is required. Supporting so many different departments requiring training from a variety of special industries is a challenge. And finally, being a good neighbor. Freedom of knowledge and helping others are core philosophies of the IT department here at Independence. The core values have driven the department's efforts in assisting colleagues in cultivating the next generation of IT professionals. The Independence IT department has gained a very positive reputation throughout Oregon. The IT department has assisted various local, county, and state IT departments. We have also had success with our IT internship program. Here's a highlight of our last two interns. Jesus Ochoa, an Independence native, completed the IT internship program, which enabled him to land a job at our local FCR call center as an IT support lead. Our next intern was Salman Al Ashari, a Saudi native on a student visa at Wu, completed the IT internship program. Coupled with his master's degree from Wu and the experience he gained from Independence, he was able to start a career as a senior security specialist for BAE Systems. Thank you, everybody. Do you have any questions?
I feel like there's going to be a test.
Multiple choice, right?
Questions first.
Yeah, I have a ton of questions. First of all, people try to make governance sound so complicated, and that was such a simple explanation that I'm going to share that with my boss after the meeting. I work at a compliance job, so that's really helpful.
Yeah.
You keep saying the IT staff and we, you don't have a team of people.
I don't, but I do at the same time. While they may not be IT professionals, I do have a lot of people that support me in the best way that they can, so.
I understand. What I think is missing from your mission statement is all the community support that you do, and you touched on it with the different hats part and with the assisting other IT departments, but I think that needs to be part of your mission statement because Independence is great about supporting the community, and I think that needs to be reflected everywhere that it can be. Within the individual departments, and I'm thinking primarily the Police Department, Public Works, because they're the biggest ones, are there people within those departments that actually manage the functionally-specific systems that they use, or are you the service desk, period?
So we kind of do a mix. Obviously, a lot of simple administrative stuff or creating templates for reports and stuff, that would be handled by the end user, not by the IT department. On common software that's used throughout the entire organization, yes, the IT department is the support for that. When it goes into specialized software, like say, computer-aided dispatch or something like that, then I act as kind of the first line of support, and then if it's above my skill set, then we have contracts with support people or agreements that we can call for extra help.
Okay, regarding the cloud situation, is this simply a utility that you purchase, or is this something that you create agreements with so that your data is protected and that there's some recourse should they have some kind of data breach?
Yes.
Okay.
There are quite a few agreements in place. Also, where we store our most sensitive data, which would be our CGIS information, they actually, Oregon State Police only approves certain cloud providers that have met their standards of security. A lot of that is the data centers are required to be on the continental U.S. All employees have to go through the same screening process that anyone that can access CGIS information goes through. There's also, I mean, the policy is like 300 pages long.
Yeah.
But yes, as far as trusting your data somewhere else, you have to look carefully at that, but yeah, there are agreements and places that are tailor-made for law enforcement, for example.
I work with CGIS data too, and I didn't realize that OSP had a list of places that they support or places that they approve. I work in a one-deep position too, and to take a week off last July, I had to train two people to do my job while I was gone.
Yeah.
You know, what do you do when you take a week off? What happens?
I honestly try to go out into the woods where there's no cell reception.
Well, I know that. Okay, what's the staff do while you're gone? That's the question.
I know, I was just being facetious there. So usually, when I try and take a vacation, I will rope in some what I call power users. There's one sitting over there that often gets the short end of the stick when I leave, Chief Mason. And essentially, I do have a back-channel way of giving ahold of me if they need to, you know? When it's on vacation, it's basically something better be on fire. In addition to that, let's say there was some incident where I get hit by a bus, I get sick, whatever happens that completely knocks me out. Not only is Bob a second administrator on just about every single system that we have, I also have a fire waterproof safe that keeps all the credentials on it and contacts for people to reach out to. And there's enough documentation there where you could hire somebody else in, and at least they could kind of figure their way out. It might take some time, but you know, it's not like they're starting with no idea what they're walking into.
Thank you. Good presentation.
There's some questions. Tom?
Well, I think I'll follow what Counselor Cora, I think, was trying to get to is, first of all, incredible job and nice presentation. I think that was just like the tip of the iceberg. But what I'm probably a little more concerned is, one of the few things I know about computers is you better have a backup, and I'm kind of looking at this going, what really is our backup for you? And I think maybe we should be looking a little more carefully at that coming the next year.
Agreed.
Yeah, I would say, just to address that, a lot of the systems that we look at, we try to at least do what's called an N plus one, which is basically you have one thing, but if you only have one thing, it's kind of worthless, so we try to have two, just in case one fails, you're still up and running. And we're still working on catching up with that, with the human aspect, so.
There's some questions. Counselor Morton?
I wanted to first congratulate you on a very nice presentation, and I really hope that that's going to be available for the public to watch.
Absolutely.
Good.
Thank you.
Good. And also, I wanted to say I've been around here long enough now to watch you really mature into this position, and you're doing an excellent job.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
There's some questions. Thank you for taking the time to share with us this evening.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, I think Mr. Pestimer, you have some introductions for our next part of the meeting.
I do, so thank you, Mary. And just one quick follow-up on Jason's presentation. You know, if you weren't sure whether you had a good IT department or not, right around April 2020, you knew for certain how good your IT department was, because with COVID coming on and all the systems that needed to be modified and moved around. In our city, it didn't hardly miss a beat. We had a lot of systems that we didn't know we had, like Microsoft Teams, we didn't really know how to use it, other than just to send a quick emoji or a text to. But we were able to almost immediately be as productive as we were before because of, quite frankly, all of Jason's hard work and foresight in transitioning our city to Office 365, having great security systems, and quite frankly, putting a lot of these systems up in the cloud. And we really didn't miss hardly any time. I know a lot of other cities at our size, you know, with months and months and months before they were really communicating effectively, and so, you know, as we walked through that, the value that Jason provided to the city was so apparent and so appreciated by all the staff, and I think it really allowed us to do a lot more than we would have been able to without his diligence and forethought. So I just wanted to make sure I recognized him for that. So the next presentation is actually for our sanitary sewer master plan and facility plan. So I have Chris Bragato and Pace Smith. They are with West Tech Engineering. They are our engineering firm of record, and I think probably way undervalued and understood is the volume of work and the importance that West Tech provides for the city. One of the nice things about having a consultant engineer is you don't have a lot of people because engineering has become very specialized, and so you have a bunch of professionals at West Tech who do different things. Chris does a lot of that. Chris does a lot of their wastewater work and has been working pretty hard for the city. One of the things that I've talked about is really important that we have up-to-date master plans so that we can make sure that we have a great capital improvement plan in place to make sure we're maintaining the systems that we have as well as preparing for the future. And so, this presentation tonight can be pretty high-level. We actually are, you know, fairly far into the process of the master plan, but one of the things that's a bit of a challenge is trying to get that community engagement piece, and since things have changed here a little bit, we're pretty excited to get that out. So Chris will kind of give, and Pace, who's with him, Pace Smith, will kind of give you an idea of exactly where we're at and kind of where we're going, because I want to make sure that we don't move too quickly and then assume that you guys have the information that you don't. So they'll kind of give a pretty high-level presentation tonight. We're kind of at that point right now where we just got a draft of the master plan, facilities plan. We're going through that at the staff level to make sure we understand and get our comments back, and then we'll all let Chris present it, but we're really excited about getting to the next step, which is actually public engagement, making sure that the community has an opportunity to see what's going on in common.
With that, Chris, go ahead and take it away. Welcome to council.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you folks. It's always nice to get out of the home. But anyways, again, my name is Chris Brigato. Pace is with me here. We're the city's engineer of record. We work on many projects for the city, but one of the projects we're working on is the wastewater system facilities plan or master plan. Those terms are kind of used interchangeably. It's the same thing, and so I'm just going to go through and give you folks just a kind of a, give you some information on why we're doing it and why it's important and that sort of thing, so that when you do see the document, you can kind of have that background. So, do I do the slides? There we go. Oh, no, go back. Yeah, okay. So typically, most cities will update their master plans, whether it's a wastewater, water parks, or stormwater, you know, 10-year intervals sort of thing. That's not set in stone, but it's fairly common. Things change, you know, enough to where you kind of want to take a fresh look and make sure you're accounting for all the issues that you have to deal with, since that's kind of why we're doing it this time. What we, at the end of the day, what the plan produces is a list of recommended capital improvements the city should plan to do over the next 20 years, okay? So it's, you know, it's like if you had a house and you had your wish list of, you know, I need to replace the windows, I don't want to remodel the home, or remodel the bathroom, I want to build a shop, and you get your wish list, and you figure out which of those are more important, and then you use that list to figure out how you're going to pay for this stuff. And so that's kind of the indeliverable of the facilities plan. So the other thing it does, it serves as a roadmap for development. So when you have a developer coming to town and want to develop an undeveloped piece of property and extend sewer service, the facilities plan provides kind of a high-level overview of how that area is to be served. You have to carefully route the water through the city's system to get it to the treatment plant, you know, so you don't overload certain parts, and there's every component of the system has a limited amount of capacity, and so you want to be careful about where you route that wastewater through. And at the end of the day, what you want to do is avoid haphazard improvements that lead to wasted money, right? So like, we see this type of thing all the time where, you know, a developer will come in, build a subdivision, he's only looking at his subdivision, he might put in an eight-inch pipe that drains his subdivision, his or hers, whatever, and then 10 years later, somebody comes along, wants to develop upstream, and that water needs to go through that subdivision. Well, shoot, that eight-inch pipe is too small, you know, it needs to be upsized to a 15. It would have been a lot more cost-effective to put it in as a 15 to begin with, because the money's really in the trenching and the surface restoration and all that kind of stuff. So often, the cities will get stuck with that, dealing with that problem, and so we want to avoid that, and that's one of the goals of the facilities plan. And then finally, we want to satisfy regulatory and funding agency requirements. There's a whole bunch of state and federal grant and loan programs that the city can tap into, and they all have requirements for a current facilities plan, and they have requirements for what the facilities plan has to have in it, the content, and so we develop these to meet those requirements so that the city can then be qualified for a lot of these programs. Okay. Regulatory background, the primary regulatory agencies, the DEQ, Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, they issue the city a permit, it's called an NPDES permit, the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, permit, and the city operates the utility in accordance with that permit. And that permit, you know, identifies the quality of water you need to produce at the treatment plant, how much water you can discharge, to where, staffing requirements, reporting requirements. City submits regular reports, monthly, annually, and so on, to DEQ. They review those. DEQ does inspections, so DEQ's the primary regulatory agency you're dealing with. DEQ wants to review and approve a facilities plan, or also the city wants them to review and approve their facilities plan, so that, you know, you're implementing things that the state agency is in agreement with. And they have their own set of requirements of the content needs to satisfy, and so we can use that, those guidelines as well. Next slide. Okay, so this is sort of the process, and we're really at step three. It's kind of where we're at right now. But, so we've collected the background information, we've done the evaluations, we developed a list of recommended improvements, prioritized those, and we presented what we call a 90% draft plan. And it's a complete document, but it just hasn't gone through city review, public review, because really, it's not your engineer's plan, it's the city's plan, okay? And so there's a process there for, you know, as best you can to try to understand this and provide feedback. So right now, the document's being reviewed by staff. They may want to make some tweaks to it, and then I think eventually it'll be presented to the public. Once we get feedback, then we obviously revise the document based on that, and there may be some back and forth there, and then, once that process is done, we submit it to DEQ, they review it. Hopefully, they don't have major comments. If they do, we may come back. Usually, they don't have major comments, they usually fairly minor. And then, we revise the document to address their comments, and then it's done, okay? It can be adopted, and then you can start implementing the recommendations. So that's the process. Just, the next couple of slides are kind of background information that set the stage for the planning effort. The area we're looking at is just the area inside the urban growth boundary, okay? We're, in order to qualify for many of the funding programs, you have to comply with Oregon's land use rules, which means you can't really look outside the urban growth For the collection system, we assume complete development of all the area in the urban growth boundary, and we're making size recommendations for piping. And that's largely because, you know, you put a sewer pipe in the ground with modern materials, it's going to last, you know, 50, 70, 100 years type of thing. And so, we want to get those pipes sized correctly for build-out, so you don't have to come back later and replace them. For the treatment plant and some of the mechanical facilities like pump stations, we usually just look at a 20-year planning period, because it is appropriate to kind of incrementally make improvements to those. The population numbers we use, so we look, we use a 20-year planning period, so kind of the magic number we're looking at is 2045, and it's a little more than 20 years, but it's a nice round number. So one of the tools we use is the population, we need to know what the population in 2045 is going to be, and we're required to use the numbers that are published by the Portland State University Population Research Center, if you're familiar with those numbers. So those are the numbers we use. And then the last point, we, for a city like Independence, we typically assume no new large water-intensive industrial users. These are like food processors, wafer manufacturers. These aren't, these are wet industries that use a lot of water in their manufacturing process, discharge a lot of water to the sewer system. It's not like marquee spas or someplace like that. That's a dry industry, they don't use a lot of water. The reason we assume there aren't any is because they can be quite large, you know? In a city like Independence, it could be a quarter of your total water usage to go to an industrial theater, and you probably don't have the water resources from the drinking water side to accommodate somebody like that. So that's an assumption you need to know we're making. We could carve out some capacity for somebody like that, but we just, we're just not sure it makes a lot of sense, but at the end of the day, that's the city's.
I'm assuming the pot processing facility is a water-intensive industry.
Excuse me?
Pot processing facility? Marijuana?
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head. You mean marijuana? Yeah, I don't, I don't, well, I mean, if they're using water to water the plants, yeah, I mean, there's a demand there, but that doesn't go down the drain, you know? So I don't know. I don't know nothing about that industry.
I wouldn't think it would be in the kind of volumes you're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, they would have substantial water bills, you know? These are, these are users that pay, I mean, they, you know, they're.
You're talking like Intels?
Yeah, or, you know, like, you know, Salem used to have a bunch of food processors that have gone away. They still have quite a few, and they're in a whole different class of user, and, yeah, I don't, I don't think pot grinders are that. I don't think they want to pay for that much water.
No.
Okay, next slide. This is just a rundown of the chapters. There's eight chapters. There's, the first chapter's a simple introduction. The second chapter is a description of the study area. We talk about population, we talk about zoning in that chapter. Chapter three is, got a slide, got messed up. Chapter three goes through the regulatory requirements, mainly dives into the rules from DEQ, which is sort of the rules of the road that we have to live by. Chapter four describes the existing system, okay? Surprisingly, a lot of city council types find that chapter interesting, because I think a lot of city council types don't really know what you have, and so, chapter four is a detailed description of what you have, and there's some history stuff in there about how it developed over time and that sort of thing. There's really, chapter four kind of breaks the system down into three parts. There's like the gravity piping that goes from the home to some low point, which is usually a pump station, okay? So the pump station is another part. The city has, do they have 11 pump stations?
13.
13 pump stations, which is quite a few, and it's really an artifact of how flat the city is, you know? As you put pipes on grade, eventually they get so deep, you got to lift the water back up and go somewhere else. So the gravity sewer drains to a low point, usually a pump station. Those pumps pump into a pressure pipe that we call a force main, and that's just engineering jargon. Those force main pipes will take the water either somewhere else, either to another part of the gravity system, the pump station, or the stations that takes it to the treatment plant. And then the final part is the treatment plant, where the water's treated, and then the disposal system. Chapter five is, presents the flow and loading projections, so that's how much water and how strong the water is that we have to treat. That's mostly engineering stuff. Chapter six is where we look at the collection system. So we do, you know, what are the existing problems? What are the problems that are likely to arise in the 20-year planning period? What are the alternatives for solving those problems, and what is the recommended solution of the alternatives that we have available to us? And that's in chapter six for the collection system, which includes the gravity piping, the pump stations, and the force mains, okay? Chapter seven is the similar type analysis, but just for the treatment plant. So we look at, you know, what are the problems today? What are the anticipated problems? What are our options for dealing with these problems, and what is the best of those options? And in chapter six and seven, we then, at the end of those, you develop the list of recommended improvements. Then you get into chapter eight where those are prioritized, okay? Which are more important, which should the city do first, and why? And then chapter eight presents the capital improvement plan. So that's, that's how the document's organized. Like I said, it's, the city staff's reviewing it now, and we'll probably make a few tweaks before it goes to the public, but I anticipate that happening in the next few weeks or so. But that's where we're at, and if you folks have any questions.
Questions for the presenter.
Try to answer them.
I had a question. Are you evaluating the stormwater system also?
No, that's a different.
Totally different?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Could you talk a little bit about your plan for public engagement? Or has that been determined at this point?
We don't have a plan for that. I think that's mainly the city's prerogative for how you guys want to do it, and we can be flexible and accommodate.
Yeah, so I think the next step is, we really want to have, I think, an open house, and I think is what we've talked about at the staff level, is to try to create an event somewhere where we can just have people come in, and obviously, we'll have our professionals there to kind of just, you know, have some exhibits and walk them through the process, walk you guys through the process as well, and start really getting into the details of actually, you know, what's in the document, so that we can get feedback. And, you know, unless things change, you know, we would like to do something in person as much as possible and allow, you know, people to come in with masks and, and just, you know, having an opportunity to talk to Chris about not only what's in the plan, but, you know, something that might be in their local neighborhood that we just aren't aware of, that might fold into the plan as well. So probably, you know, we want to do a good job advertising that, so it'll probably be in a few weeks out, but we'd like to do something sooner rather than later, because we would really like to get this plan finished up, so.
Thank you. Excitement, sewers.
That's great.
I just, yes, a field trip, and I will tell you, I've never, on my first mayor's conference, it was amazing. I never saw so many people go excited about sewers when we were going to go do a treatment, a tour. Mayors flocking to the buses, and.
Have you all been to the treatment plant?
Some of us have.
That's why I was saying we need another field trip, because we have some newer councils, and we did sort of a water system tour a few years back.
Yeah, we've gotten behind on that, those trips, so.
There we go.
People haven't.
Something to look forward to, a trip to the sewer treatment plant.
I think those are super helpful, because, you know, it doesn't take an engineering degree to see something and see, well, this is kind of old and.
Right. Well, thank you for taking the time.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. I think Mr. Pestimer, I get you the next one, too.
And just as a reminder, I try to mention this at every time we talk about this, but the next step after we adopt the master plan will be to bring on a consultant to really take a look at our SDCs, the methodology that we're using there, the fees that we're charging for system development charges, and then the fees for user rates. So one of the reasons we do these master plans and we go through all this effort is to figure out that 20-year picture, but then figuring out what we need to accomplish over, you know, probably a five-year period of time, and make sure that we have the pieces in place, that developers are paying their fair share for growth-related projects, and that we're charging fees appropriately to our residents. We're waiting a little bit to get the sewer plan done, because we plan on doing the transportation and the sewer at the same time, so we basically can save some money by hiring a consultant to do both at the same time. And then, as we move through, we're going to be doing water and storm sewer will kind of be the next two. Water is actually, they're both in the budget for this year. I'm not certain that we're going to get wastewater done this year, just because consultants are getting really, really busy. And so, as we look at infrastructure projects and doing some other things, we may choose to do an infrastructure project rather than a stormwater master plan at this point, but we'll see as time moves on. So I just wanted to, as we. So, I just wanted to, as we learn more information, to just kind of share with you. So, this is really, thank you, Chris Pace. And behind me, in case you haven't noticed, it's a little bit more active than, than normal because they are starting the night paving for this area out here. I don't think they're going to be doing any paving tonight, but they have a lot of grinding to do. And one of the things that we recognized early on is if we tried to do that during the day, we're going to create, you know, really, really bad transportation issues out here. We're still going to have bad transportation issues out here, but we're hoping to minimize this as much as possible. So, yeah, it's, it's more exciting behind me than maybe where I'm at. So, just wanted to give you a quick update. There's really nothing here significant, but I do want to make sure that we're being as open as we can when we, we learn information. So, not last Friday, but the Friday before, I went to a pres- our council of governments meeting, and Jody Christensen was there. Jody Christensen is our, our local representative with Regional Solutions. And so, she gave me some information that I said, "Well, gosh, if I'd known that on Tuesday, I would have shared that with council because it was part of the missing piece of the information." So, what really she presented was very draft. She made it clear that we could share this information, but it is draft, that was nine fifteen when I got this draft presentation. I can guarantee it's already changed. And it is a moving target for them and for everybody else. But at least we're starting to get a little bit more information about where some of the money that's coming into the state is actually going to go out of the state. This is not, not at all a comprehensive list. The numbers here, while this is mid, while I'm at Mid Valley Investments, most of these are state numbers, so it's statewide that you're going to see. There was another part of the presentation that specified just Mid Valley stuff, you know, the different representatives and money that they were putting out. But this presentation is just to start to show you, okay, well, here's where the pots of money are, because that's what we're really trying to figure out, is, okay, where are, where are the pots of money? So that when we get the information from you, from resident support programs and business support programs and infrastructure programs, we can really focus our efforts on trying to figure out where we have needs and where those might match up with state funding sources. So, Karen, you can go to the first slide here. And really, this is all I'm going to give you, is just some really high-level, you know, information. So, as you can see, almost nine hundred million dollars, that's almost a billion dollars, is going to be going to housing. And so, that's broken down into, you know, a, a number of different categories there. And as you can see, it is, they're big numbers there. And so, a lot of what the state is going to be doing is putting in the housing program. So, as you're coming up with resident support, you know, opportunities, there's a, a great category to be thinking about because clearly there is a, a huge amount of money in that particular program. Childcare, that is something that has been talked about a lot. There are a lot of different programs out there, but you can see another round of very significant investment in a lot of different programs. The two hundred fifty million dollars down there towards the bottom of the list for childcare stabilization funds, they're already starting to create programs for that. That's a lot of money, and there will be lots of opportunities to that. There are also federal monies that are out there. There's other monies that are outside of the ARPA program that are actually being engaged already. I know that the county is working, you know, hard on that. We had a meeting with them recently, and quite frankly, they're making some, some great efforts to try to reach into childcare. But that is something that there's going to be a lot of money out there for and a lot of opportunities, and we're really trying to keep an eye on that and how we can potentially pay, play a role in that.
Next slide.
Infrastructure. So, this is not the entire list of infrastructure monies that are going to be coming out. I think this is one area where the state's kind of still, you know, trying to figure out where all the money's going to go, but they have already made, you know, some commitments. Broadband being, you know, at the top of the list there. There is a fairly significant amount of money coming out for a broadband connecting to schools and then just for Business Oregon. That, that just says Business Oregon there because they're giving Business Oregon a large chunk of money as they did during the CARES program, although I think this is more. And Business Oregon is going to come up with the rules and the grant programs to figure out how to disperse that money. So, again, I don't have any of the details of where this might go at this point in time, but as you can see, we're starting to see where the pots of money are. So, that tells us, okay, well, we can start, you know, figuring out whether we have a, a need for those programs or not.
Can I just clarify the septic section there? Are they talking about the septic systems of individual homeowners?
I think so, yeah. That one's one that I noticed because I, it wasn't a huge amount of money relative to what cities would need for, for systems. So, that one really jumped out to me as trying to be helpful to property owners and, and others. I can't imagine that that would, I mean, that's not even going to buy, you know...
And I think some of that is, I know from being in some of the same means, I know some of those have to do with canyon.
Yes, and there's, next slide will actually have some canyon stuff on it, I think, or might, maybe that was a further slide. But there's a ton of money going up to the canyon for sewers, systems and water systems up there, and that was separated out separately from this. Special Public Works Fund, again, Business Oregon, not sure what that is, but there's a lot of money there. And so, we obviously have Public Works projects that we've already given to the state, and they've been vetting those for a long period of time. So, we're really hoping to be able to get a couple of awards from there and use some of our ARPA money as matching funds for what that, and in particular, one of them is a nice street sewer system. That'll be something that comes through. The wastewater master plan is a very important project. We've designed it, we're ready to go. We're just holding out on funding it because rather than funding it ourselves and coming all, mostly coming from user fees, we'd rather try to get grant funds for that. And then the well development that we passed at the last council meeting to do the design on, those are projects that are at the top of our list the state started considering. And if we can get grants for that through Business Oregon or some other program, then all's we have to do is come up with matching funds and we'll be well-positioned. Energy, lots of different things there. I think most of those are community type of projects, so probably at the end-user level. I don't know if it'll be much for state and city programs, but we'll certainly keep an eye on that.
Was born and raised in a home in a extremely low poverty level, and I was given the opportunity at thirteen to get a job. And it was from one of these youth employment opportunities, and I think it changed my course of life. And so, I think I'm really excited that this is in here and given that opportunity to kids.
Yeah, as I was driving through Newburgh the other day, there was a sign out in front of McDonald's, hiring fourteen and fifteen-year-olds, fifteen dollars per hour, so...
Yeah.
It's a, it's a different world out there for them.
No, I know. I think I made three dollars an hour, but we're stoked.
Additional questions?
I guess I have a question. So, in, in the news, the government shut down and the debt ceiling and raising it and everything, does that impact anyone here? Is everybody just city or state workers? We don't have any federal workers in Independence that would, if, if we do shut, if the government shuts down, is that going to affect Independence at all?
Well, I mean, certainly there are workers here that work for the federal government. The federal government has people everywhere. There, there are also programs here that probably get impacted by that as well. Last time, we had a shutdown, which was a number of years ago. It rippled through, you know, the, the economy and, and different systems in a lot of ways that people didn't think about. It won't, I don't think it'll have a huge significant impact, but it's, it certainly will be felt and noticed, and there will be issues with that. So, hopefully, they're able to work through the challenges, and honestly, they have a lot of challenges right now on a financial level with the federal government, so...
I was, I was kind of wondering if, if for some reason they don't increase the debt ceiling and we actually default as a nation, can they take some of our money back that they gave us? Like, how, I mean, I don't think we've ever seen this really before, so...
That's a good question. I have no idea. You know, could they, you know, change ARPA programs at the state level? I, well, I don't know.
They gave us the money, but...
Yeah, I, I could ask...
They need it themselves.
Yeah, I, I can certainly ask. We, we have some people, representatives back in DC who might know a little bit more in that, but...
Yeah, I'm just curious if it's something that...
Obligated money is obligated money. I mean, if it's been allocated, I don't think they can take it back. But to ask if the, if the state will be impacted by federal shutdown, yes, we do a lot of pass-through funding from the feds to state programs. So, if the federal government does shut down, that could impact state programs.
Good question. Yes?
One more thing. I've heard a new term, and I'm sure more experienced counselors know this word, but it's called human infrastructure. And I was just curious on how broad that term is, exactly what its meaning is. And so, if we have money that's supposed to be spent on infrastructure because we now have this new definition of human infrastructure, are we able to adapt some of our spend, our spending to that?
I don't know. I'll have to take a look at that. We're using the term infrastructure very generically at this point because, again, we don't know what the programs are going to look like. And so, you know, I, I, I can look into that. That's not something that I've seen in the rules. But, you know, the thing with human infrastructure, you know, like I said earlier, is you have to be careful because if you add a program or create something and you can't maintain it, then you haven't done anybody a favor in the long run. But I, that's a good question as well. I, I'm not familiar with that term, and so let me look into it and get some more information.
What was the term? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Human infrastructure?
Human infrastructure.
I thought there was a new term for human resources, something, okay.
When, when they were talking about some, some expenditures, that as important as building roads and bridges are building essentially people up, educating them and having a functioning workforce.
It's been mentioned more at the federal level, and I haven't, haven't heard it in, utilized with any of the, in the conversations that I've been involved with at the...
And it probably depends on who you talk to as what it means.
Yeah. So, it'll be interesting to find out.
Okay.
Great.
Great. Well, I just want to give you an update, so that is really all I have.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any announcements?
I have one.
Please.
I spoke with Public Works a few weeks ago about some, the obstacle course down at the sports park was under distress, and a lot of the things had been broken for some odd reason or another. And they just went down, and they did a phenomenal job fixing it back up. They even made things better than what they were. So, I think they're going to last longer for our community to use in terms of exercise. And I just want to thank Public Works for going above and beyond in such a short period of time, really, to really improve that area. I'm just so grateful.
Great, thank you. Councilor Morton, I thought I saw your hand.
No, you did not. You made my announcement earlier about the ghost walk.
Okay. Additional things?
Well, but we didn't get like times and starting point and...
Oh, well.
There's a softball there for you.
I happen to have a map I will share with you, and when you come down to the park at seven o'clock...
On what day?
On Saturday night, the second of October, you will receive this map that shows all the different sites, and presentations will begin roughly every ten minutes. It will go for two hours, and masks are recommended for outdoor use and required if you go into any of the buildings. And it's free.
Great.
I think that answers all of my questions, counselor. Thank you.
I, I had a question for Chief Mason. I've been hearing some stuff online about break-ins on Sixth and Seventh Street. Is that something that you're allowed to share with us or update us on or...
I can share that, can you hear me? I can share that there were some, yes. We don't have anyone in custody. We're still working some leads.
And they're actually breaking into people's homes, like actually entering the homes?
They entered a garage, and they were getting, I, I believe actually they entered two garages. One of the garages was open, the other, they got a remote out of an open car and got into the garage through the use of a, of a remote that they got out of an unlocked car.
Okay. And just those two different...
And some vehicles, but a couple of garages and some vehicles as well.
Okay, thank you.
Great. And just to let everybody else know that the F Street Bridge project has begun. They were bashing, there's no bridge there now. Well, there's, there's only parts of a bridge. It's no longer bridgable. And so, F Street is going to be out of action to cross there for, until sometime in the middle of winter.
And you'll need to use the East Street entrance to Inspiration Garden.
There you go. So, that's, that's all we need to know. If there's nothing else, somebody say the word adjourn.
I'll go to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're done. Have a pleasant evening. Thank you.